Welcome everybody to the Nevada Community School District's June 20th School Board Meeting. And I, with that said, I'd like to call the meeting to order and seek approval of the agenda.
Move to approve the order as presented.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as was published on Friday. No additions?
We have one addition.
One addition.
Action item 5.1 for approval of the 2021 annual financial reports.
So noted. We have an agenda with an action item placed here for our audit approval. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. You have a meeting. Public comment. Brian, did anybody contact you? Well, let us get to the program. 4.1 Student Achievement Report. Dr. Hazmas, I think this is yours.
Yeah, all right. So let me just get linked up here real quick. All right, we're up and running. Okay, so we're a little bit ahead of the game this year with our presentation of recapping the 2021-22 school year specifically related to school achievement. We'll go through our FAST data and then also some projected ISAP results. So ISAP official results have not been sent to school districts. All that we have had are the results of individual students. So I was able to take individual student results and then kind of make some projection based off percentages of proficiency levels for students based off of those individual numbers. So what you're going to see tonight is not final by any means, but it's just kind of a guess of where we're currently at based off of the students that assessed with us in the spring. There could be some students that their scores moved to a different district if they spent the majority of the school year, enrolled in another district, but maybe came to us in February. The same could be said for a student that was with us through February or March and then moved to a different district. Their results would come back to us. We do not have anything regarding students with IEPs, Free and Reduced Launch, any type of demographics. We just have student name, score, and grade accessible to us right now. So just a heads up on that, but did want to get this released out to you prior. So taking a look at our first district long-term goal specific to literacy. Our goal and the goal essentially of every school district in the state of Iowa for students in grades K through six is to be at 80% on their FAST assessments. Kind of have a recap here and we'll dig a little bit deeper into this, but the start of the school year, we were at 74%. The winter, we jumped to 76%, and the spring, this last assessment period moved to 77%. If you remember, EK students are counted in our kindergarten numbers and they're also assessed at the kindergarten level. There's a reason they're in EK, so it's basically assessing them a grade ahead. If we were to take our EK students out, so just taking specifically our kindergarten through six, which we're obviously able to do from a data standpoint, we're at 79%, so we're moving in the right direction, which is great to see. Our second goal is specific to us, and this is just something that we've kind of done over the years, looking specifically at our first through fourth graders. So we're taking away the, obviously, the fifth, sixth middle school side and then also the kindergarten side of things and still trying to move that percentage also up to 80%. At the fall, we're at 77, or excuse me, 71%. Winter, 77. And then in the spring, our last assessment period, at 79%. So this will be next year, the first time that we will have a goal that'll be above our typical goal of 80%. Going to challenge Mrs. Denai and Mr. Temple to push to that 82%, 83% with a goal then of the following year to be at 85% and continuing to move along. That is some lofty goals, lofty expectations, but with our trend line, we do think it's appropriate. So.
Does that goal include EK? I mean, which side of that number? Where is the 82?
82 would be that first through fourth. We would still probably push just because our spring K through six is at 77. We'd still probably keep that at 80 and yeah, continue to move in that line. Central's building goal, which was specific to literacy, was by the end of the school year to have 98% of first through fourth grade students meeting grade level expectations or showing at least one year of growth in reading. And this is specific to their guided reading program, which they adapted this school year. The literacy footprints, which you all approved the purchase of using SRR2 and SRR3 funds. So basically, every first through fourth grader, we're expecting them to be exactly where they're at as identified through an individual assessment piece with their teacher. We met that goal, so 93% of our first through fourth graders met the year-end benchmark of guided reading or made at least one year of academic growth. When we expanded that to all central students, we were at 91%. So naturally, we'll probably have two goals, would be my guess, next year. A PK through four and then also a first through fourth goal. Digging in a little bit deeper into individual grades, so this is kindergarten and first grade of this school year. And if you look, and again, they take the early reading test, but if we're looking progressing from the left to the right, fall of 2020 to winter of '21, spring to '21, we do have data that goes back, obviously, to the 18, 19, 19, '20 school year. But we decided just for this beginning piece, just to take a look at where students were when they came back to us at COVID and kind of where we're progressing from there. So obviously, our kindergarten, kindergarten students weren't with us last year because they weren't in school yet. But our first graders, if you look on the far left, those scores would be those students as kindergarteners and then obviously the scores this year. The one number that we really put a huge emphasis on, if you're looking at first grade, spring 2021, 48%. That means at the end of the school year last year, half of our students were proficient based off of the early reading assessment. So that was a huge piece, or a huge emphasis for us this year, working with our first grades, with our first grade students, with our first grade teachers, and then also our kindergarten teachers to assure that that dip did not occur. The fall and winter assessment is much different than the spring. In the spring of the kindergarten assessment, they really start to dig in to context clues and to some just deeper vocabulary that's taking place in aid reading. And of course, some of our students are still just learning how to read. So naturally, there's always kind of been a dip for us. And we did have a drop from where our students were at the kindergarten level at the start of the school year to where they ended in the spring. Trying to be proactive and think positively, the rate at which that decline occurred is much different than it was the year previously and years previously in the past. So it was a 7% drop. It usually were, or we have been in a double-digit drop in years past. Obviously, last year was a higher drop of almost 25%. So I guess what I'm saying is we're bridging the gap of our typical decline, so continuing to move that number hopefully up. From this year? Yeah, so I would correlate it to the literacy footprints, the guided reading program that we implemented. We also put a huge emphasis on professional development for our kindergarten teachers. Not sure if you remember the name Jen Burns, but we used about 18,000 of SRR2, SRR3 funds for specific professional development from her. She met with, or she came in about March of last year and did PD specific to the building and then also to our early, our early reading teachers, EK, kindergarten, and then also first grade. That continued during the school year. She came to Central Elementary two times each month for some specific PD. One day was specific to the whole building, and then the other day was specific to our kindergarten first grade teacher. So that's what I would correlate it to. I think Chris and Travis would probably agree to that, so just a larger emphasis essentially on reading structure within the classroom and that curriculum program. Yep. Jumping on to our second, third, and fourth grade, so we like green, obviously. A lot greener here on this side. And just some numbers that I think are also kind of correlated to this PD also. And we'll hope that this trend will continue to grow with our students coming in at the start of the year at a higher spot. So highlighting, if we just look on the far left, our second, third, and fourth graders, when they came to us back from COVID, 59, 65, 67% at the start of the fall of 2020 school year. Looking at where those same groups are at, at the spring of 2022, 85, 85, and 77. So that's a huge jump and a number that we're very excited about. I mean, if you almost look, a fourth of the class that wasn't proficient is now proficient in that second grade class when they started as first graders, and then a continued incline also from the start of last year to the end of last year. And the same thing, I think, I personally think this directly correlates to the six-figure amount that you all committed using SRR2, SRR3 funds to our elementary literacy piece just specifically from that learning loss that was, that was missing during COVID. There's also consistency, I would say, within every classroom now curriculum-wise, literacy setup-wise, classroom-wise, where that wasn't the case, kind of individual teachers were doing their own thing, if you will, within their PLCs. And now with a common curriculum, everybody's working at the same level. One other huge piece of this that I forgot a second ago would be the halftime interventionist position. That's specific to literacy. Aaron Klopsted made a transition from being full-time Title I to being halftime Title I reading, halftime reading interventionist in the elementary. That then opened up an additional position that we were able to fill. We did the same thing with Morgan Temple, who was a behavior and math interventionist. And again, we used SRR2, SRR3 funds for that position. So I think those two things, there's a direct correlation to that happening. So money well spent, I would say. Digging a little bit deeper here into the guided reading. So on the bottom, we have the expected guiding re-level of students as they enter each grade. And then in the winter and the fall, kind of hit on this, but you can see there's a pretty huge jump. If we look at EK, in the fall, that's basically beginning reading, right, at A. Same thing at the winter, and then a two-level jump into the spring. So that can be a little bit difficult for our early readers making that jump. It's interesting, if you look, EK, spring, at the end of EK, and then the start of kindergarten and the winter of kindergarten, students haven't even, aren't expected to make back that growth until the second half of their first grade year. So just some kind of things to look at as you're looking at each of those numbers. But taking a look at where our students started at the fall compared to where they ended in the spring, some large gains there from the start of the year to the end of the year. I know there is a little bit of a decrease for some grades from the winter to the spring. That, and again, that's just kind of because of that large jump that takes place, winter to spring. When we come back in the fall, hopefully, we'll see what, you know, students or where they're at based off of learning loss from the summer, but hopefully because of how high students are at currently and the continued push to continue to read during the summer, being able to provide students some of the at-home packets for students to be able to use over the summer, which I don't think we've really done in the past, just because we haven't had access to them curriculum-wise. But with literacy footprints, that's a huge piece of it, so being able to provide students access to that, hopefully, will continue that trend. Our middle school data, and again, our middle school has continued to work and continue to push their MTSS structure, identifying first off some improved, improved teaching strategies within Tier One, but then also Tier Two for interventions and Tier Three for interventions. We do have a literacy intervention position that was created using SRR2, SRR3 funds that was in place for last year. That was Amy Weaver, and she did a great job restructuring the MTSS program. And hopefully, we'll kind of continue to see an increase in numbers here. Our seventh and eighth graders traditionally have always kind of dropped off a little bit. The good thing, or at least the positive piece for us, is our seventh graders made a 10% jump from the start of the school year to the end of the school year. Our eighth graders did have a couple of students that moved in that threw the data off a little bit, but you know, that 1% trend line, we're still kind of moving in the right direction. Our sixth grade students is an area of emphasis for us as they transitioned to seventh grade. They, we did see a decline with our sixth graders from the fall to the spring, both in reading and math. Staff is aware of that. If you ask them, they might indicate that there could be some things related to some classroom behaviors and just adjustment to the adolescence that's taking place. And we've kind of seen this over the years with our sixth and seventh graders. We do have a behavior program that will be implemented for the first time next year for our middle school. It's tied to Capturing Kids' Hearts, but it's an additional program that will be, that we're purchasing in the amount of $4,000. That will be kind of worked into weekly lessons for our middle school students. That will be led by their Cub Pride teachers and then also making a financial commitment also, I think, of $3,000 or something like that for our Tier Three behavior program, a Y-try program. We have six teachers that are going through training right now through that. So we know that this is an issue and have some things in place to hopefully address that, not only at the sixth grade level, but at all grade level wise. Taking a look at our district compared to the other districts in the Heartland AEA and then also the state of Iowa. This is backtracking to the, to the, to the fall of 2019, so this is before COVID had hit. 79% and then 74% in the winter, and then you can obviously see the impact COVID had on things and then kind of our resurgence back up. So moving in the right direction, again, this is comparing us at 77% currently to the other districts in our AEA, which is at 70%, and then also the state of Iowa, which is at 66%. Not a big jump in AEA and state schools and a 1%, you know, jump for us. So we're trending back to where we were and hopefully we'll continue to push and get towards that 80% and hopefully above it for our K through six students. Moving on to math, really the highlight of this one is the spring of 2022. Taking a look at our first graders, 89% of students proficient. And that, and that line obviously is pretty consistent with where we were in the fall and the winter. An increase each testing period, which is exciting to see. But looking back at where that group was at when they started with us, the kindergarteners, three-fourths of the class was proficient now to almost 90%. So we've got some work to keep those numbers high and to keep those numbers moving in, moving in the right direction. Looking at second, third, and fourth, again, a lot of green in this area. The big celebration with this would be all of our grade levels in the spring were above 80%, which again is kind of the set goal. One thing you might also remember here is that we did, we will be adopting a new curriculum program, PK through four. Some might look at the data and say, well, why are, why are you doing this? This is why we're doing it. If you take a look at kind of our trend lines here as we continue to move not only in FAST but more importantly to the ISAPS, which we'll look at a little bit. We're noticing that the math programs that we've had, first off, they're not consistent, grade level to grade level, which they will be now, but they're also teaching math kind of in the reverse of what is recommended to us from the AEA and also from the Department of Ed. So not to dig too deep into this, but probably all of us here learned math from a fluency standpoint. So we understood that two, two times two, or memorized that two times two was four, three times three was nine, five times five was 25. Now there's a kind of a shift to first develop factual understanding or conceptual understanding of why two times two is four, why three times three is nine, why five times five is 25. Then work fluency from that once you understand the conceptual understanding and then work towards application. And that's exactly what Bridges does, that's what illustrative math also uses. It's also what a variety of others, but Bridges, if you remember, was the highest recommended for med reports for our younger learner, so that is why we're kind of moving to that switch. Bridges was very clear, the AEA was very clear, that as you adopt a new curriculum program, you might see a little bit of dip in your data specifically possibly to FAST. But over time, that trend line should come up and should actually be above where, where you would be. So I guess our kind of overarching theme here is our math is in a, in a good spot. We're hopeful with the Bridges adaptation will move to a great spot. Math data, again, we've kind of pushed the needle here for our students, which is good to see at the middle school. We're also transitioning out of the self-paced math piece of things and kind of moving to a different plan as Mr. Snyderman, I think, had communicated to everybody earlier. So we're excited about where this will, will take us and where we'll go. We do have through the TLC program a literacy PD, or excuse me, a math PD lead in both the elementary and the middle school who do a lot of data digging for us, then also lead some professional development as needed for our teachers, maybe more specific to Level Two or Tier Two and Tier Three interventions. So I think our structure's in a good place from a support standpoint. It's just continuing to stay on things and make sure that we're doing everything possible from an instructional standpoint within the classroom. All right, so digging into our ISAP data here. So again, the 2019, the 2021 proficiencies, those were communicated from the state. Those are final. There's no changes with those. Our 2022 proficiencies that I have listed here are projections, again, based off of just students that assessed with us in the spring. So first and foremost, if we're looking at it from 2019 to 2022, looking at results, all green, which is, which is great to see. A number that really hit home to us last year was our current fourth graders assessing, it'd be their 2021 proficiency. So that would be them as third graders, 53%. That was identified by the state as one of the lowest grade level performances of, for many, many years of any statewide assessment, whether it was the ITBS, the Iowa assessments, the ISAPS, whatever it was. One of the lowest, like I said, scoring groups for ELA or math that the state's ever seen. And we kind of fit with, within that trend of only 53%, but if you take a look at this year, 85% of our fourth graders were proficient, which is awesome. That's a huge jump, obviously. One-third of the class made a jump from that. And then comparing our fourth graders as third graders to our third graders this year, that 53% last year for third grade, this year, 86% of our third graders that assessed with us were proficient. So that's great to see. Again, I would directly correlate that to everything that's taken place in the classroom with literacy footprints, our intervention position. Put a little bit more stock into this because these assessments that the students are taking are directly tied to the Iowa Core, which is what they're learning in the classroom, where the FAST assessments not necessarily are tied to that. Those are, those are screeners for identification purposes. So I guess that put a little bit more stock into this. Overall, our ELA scores, you can see, are moving in the right direction. Again, we identified that sixth grade group. They did go down a little bit from last year to this year. And then our fifth graders, last year's fourth graders, very high percentage, 88%. We did have a couple of new students move in that might have thrown that off a little bit, but still above 80%, which is great to see. Going to look at math, a little bit more red. So again, this might maybe kind of correlate to what we were speaking to before about kind of that shift in thinking a little bit from fluency to conceptual understanding when learning math. However, we did see some increases from last year to this year, which is good to see. Mr. Reinswiler, Mr. Smith, we've met multiple times on that 53%, 61%, and 60% at the high school to figure out ways to, to improve that. And they have some strategies that they've identified next year that they're going to be implementing to be able to kind of push the needle a little bit with those scores. But again, hopefully, with the change in the Bridges program, things will kind of take care of itself. Unfortunately, we won't see it for a couple of years here until those students at the elementary, at the middle school, and high school level. But overall, I would say probably the highlight again would be our elementary performance, specifically third and fourth grade, 88% for third graders and then 79% for our fourth grade. So that's, that's great to see. I'm very curious to see when the profile information comes up, where our elementary will land just because of the big change, the big jump from our third to fourth graders, and then just the performance of our third grader. So I think we'll have some celebrations there to look forward to for our elementary building and also our middle school, high school as well. They, they were trending in the right direction, which is, which is great to see. Now hopefully, when the state reports come back, they'll mirror this fairly close. But again, these are just kind of early projections for our students. We also, our students also do take the science assessment, which is in fifth, eighth, and 10th grade. One thing to just kind of think on, when our 10th grader, or what our 10th graders are assessed over is all science levels from chemistry, biology, earth science, environmental science, space, and life science. For those of you that have kids that have gone through the high school, you might remember as a 10th grader, they would have only taken biology and the whole host of ones that I named at the end. Majority of our 10th graders haven't yet had chemistry, yet they're being assessed over it. So just something to kind of keep in mind. The state's aware of this and they said we'll continue to test at 10th grade. So this kind of is, is what it is for us.
So did you know there's going to be an expansion of the testing at grade levels in the science?
It doesn't sound as if it will, as if there will be.
Particularly in like the elementary and elementary?
Right, right, yeah. Yeah, I haven't heard anything with it of that happening. The science data also doesn't play into the school profile that, that schools have or that districts use or the state provides, so yeah, just. It'd be nice, or at least if it was sixth, eighth, 10th, so you could see kind of the same students' trend line. Because like these comparisons, so I'm taking the 2022 fifth graders, comparing them to last year's fifth graders, to fifth graders from two years ago, which is, it's not the same group of students, so it's kind of not apples to apples, if you will. Yep. All right, just a couple more things here. So our graduation rate. Looking at our, our four-year graduation rate for the class of 2021 was at 95.4% compared to the state average of 90.2. There was a drop, obviously, from the class of 2020 to the class of 2021. Can only speculate a few potential things that could have popped up, specifically probably COVID might have had an impact on that. The good news is, is the majority of that three or 4% that wasn't with us did come back for a fifth year. And hopefully, we'll see that five-year graduation rate of those same students increase from, from that. We did have one dropout here, so this, from this school year, and I'm seeing, I'm looking, that heading's not correct, so I apologize. I was about to skip the slide. But we did have one dropout from the district, one student dropout as compared to two the year before. Our overall rate is still really, really low, 0.1%. So continue to keep kids in school, which is awesome, great to see. So again, this is just kind of a quick overview. The FAST data is, is final, but we will have our, our whole-scale annual report once we get the achievement reports back from the Department of Ed that usually, or excuse me, from Pearson. Last year, we got that late in July, so as soon as we have that, and just might give me a week or two to kind of re-update some things and pull together some more information. But we'll have our final student achievement report, and I will bring that back to the school board probably in August, maybe September, just depending on when we get our results. In that, we'll have our final ISAPS, our final ISAP data comparison. We're able to compare us to the AE, to us, to other districts in the AEA and then also the state. Our ACT trend data, which will have the class of 2021. Our ACT trend data, which will have the class of 2022 results, we usually get that middle of July, August. Also PSAT results from our eight through 10th graders, some post-secondary enrollment trends, and then also our building attendance rates. We're submitting our SRI here a little bit later this week, hopefully by Thursday. Student reporting in Iowa, so it's just kind of like your, your final report of the school year. Variety of different things that goes into that, and one of that is it pulls your final attendance for the school year. So we'll have that. I do, just kind of looking at it, our trend is pretty much the same as it's been. We're in the mid-90s at both the elementary, middle school and high school, which is kind of, like I said, been our trend line the past couple of years, 93, 94, 95, 96-ish percent for attendance rate. All right, so I know there were some kind of questions as we were going through, which is 100% fine. Anything else that popped up or slides you'd like me to go back to to maybe explain?
Well, you reference a lot of positions created with federal dollars that are going to expire. I mean, you're looking at what I assume, which I suspect are results from those positions and those efforts. I guess I'm going to be looking to hear on a directional basis what we're doing to keep that moving or acquire it, make it our own and then cost it out.
Right, yeah. So it gets a little tricky, especially with the decline in enrollment, right? That makes things a little bit trickier. The elementary position, those intervention positions are still intact for next school year. Next year, of course, is the last year for the ESTER funding. The middle school position, we're going to have to shuffle a little bit because we weren't able to fill the special ed position. So Amy Weaver will be going back into her spot. That, of course, leaves that intervention position. We are working with Mr. Snyderman, Mrs. Huber on how to get creative to be able to kind of spread those duties a little bit within our middle school group. Again, we do have some TLC positions that have PD leads. Amy is, Amy Weaver is our literacy PD lead, Allison Ingham, excuse me, is our math PD lead, and then Allison Dooling is our behavior PD lead. Might have to get creative with TLC and maybe look at possibly some restructuring of the instructional guide position or maybe making some shifts within that to kind of, to see how to make things work because those positions are key for us. So yeah, just kind of a reshuffling of the duties. The good news is, is the number of students that need interventions is much lower than what it was two years ago, right when we came back from COVID. Our system was built to support anywhere from probably 15 to maybe, right, a little under 30% of students needing interventions. And that number in some cases jumped up to 40, almost 50%. So that got a little tricky for us. That number's come back down, so yeah, it could open up some possibilities for that. So I guess the long-winded answer is we're aware of it and do, and we are working on a plan to be able to provide that support because of what the data shows the impact it had.
Well, you led off with the fact enrollment is a driver, which you can anticipate.
Right.
It's up.
Anybody else?
Dom, I know you guys. I'm starting to get too busy. You ask very intelligent questions. What do you got? Okay.
And if anything pops up, because I'll be back in August, the more detailed, you know, report.
Let's step into this computer science plan.
All right.
4.2. Take it away.
Okay, so requirements here from the Future Ready Act, House File 2629, all public schools must have a K through 12 computer science plan by July 1st, 2022. And this is what that is. It does not have to be board-approved, we just have to have a district plan. It just makes sense, in our opinion, to communicate this to you, so you guys are all aware of this. This by July, I'm going to go down to the bottom here, but starting July 2022, all schools also have to offer at least one high-quality, one semester course at the high school level, grades nine through 12. Working back then, grades one through six and then also seven, eight, must also have a high-quality computer science instruction plan that's being provided at least at one grade level, starting July 1st. So for us, that'd be the 23, 24 school year. So this plan basically outlines how we're going to meet these requirements. There was a draft plan that was provided by the Department of Ed for districts to use. We're following that plan and I think Dr. Gray included that into the board agenda. There's a lot of different links to some audits and different things. This presentation just kind of outlines the development of it. And then it also does have some supporting links here that has the specific house file, the guidance provided by the Department of Ed. And then most importantly, a computer science audit, standards audit. That Carrie Hillman did the majority of the work to complete this. Having her in the district in this position has been huge for us. She, you'll see kind of through this, she's kind of taking on, or I should say, has been doing a lot of the instruction and learning. I would say probably 70% of standards were already covered for us. And it's because of her work and then also James Mills as well. But in talking to the Department of Ed, that verbiage of high quality is where it's kind of up for individual district interpretation. You do not have to assess on all the standards. You just have to kind of provide learning for students for K through eight. So yeah, just a little bit tricky here as we're kind of navigating through this. The good thing is, is we're a year ahead, like we always try to be, and in a good place here, starting for this school year. We'll learn things as we go, make some edits as needed, and then be able to meet all of these requirements starting 23, 24. So our first kind of objective, objective here is develop our district vision. And this kind of is correlated from a variety of things. It's derived from the Department of Ed's vision of computer science programs across the state and kind of correlates with our kind of overall vision for students. So all students in Nevada Community School District will engage in the key concepts and practices of a high-quality computer science program through intentional progression of experiences tied to state national standards in order to prepare learners to become citizens that positively impact society. So that's kind of what we're trying to accomplish here with the integration of computer science within our district. Timeline of how this was created, so in November of this year, we started working on this plan. Variety of different people helped with this. All the, all the building administrators, myself, Carrie Hillman, Joe Wakeman, and then James Mills. And then also our elementary teachers and our middle school class, or our middle school teachers also just on where some of these standards were also already being hit. The big work was, was going through and completing that computer science audit. So Carrie Hillman and myself did a majority of the work. And honestly, I shouldn't even put my name into that sentence, it should just be Carrie Hillman did a majority of the work. I just kind of helped with the organization a little bit of a few things. And then we took our plan to the SIAC committee and reviewed it with them last week. And then, of course, we're here today with all of you. In July, we'll submit our computer science plan to the Department of Ed. And then we have to offer at least one high-quality, one semester course at the high school. We're already doing that and have been doing that for a number of years. So that requirement will be met by Computer Science Essentials, which is a one-credit course. We have four offerings of that for the 2022, 23 school year. Cybersecurity, which is a two-credit course, we have one offering of that in the block setup. And then our AP Computer Science Principles, which is also a dual-credit course, two credits, one offering of that during the 22, 23 school year. So really, we just needed to offer essentially computer science, one-credit course, one offering of it to meet this requirement. However, we don't believe that's the best thing for students. So you can see we're providing them a variety of options that are available. Another thing, like I said, we want to be ahead of the game or try to always be at least one year ahead of the game. We are adding a new course at the middle school, which is a computer science elective. It'll be taught by Kaylee Hager. It'll be meeting all of the six, seven, eight standard requirements, which of course will be happening in, or excuse me, a majority of the six, seven, eight. We also have the GTT elective course also that hits some of the computer science. So between the two of them, we'll be meeting all of our six, seven and eight standards. This will be a standalone course that'll be added to the seventh-grade elective cycle. Just kind of continuing, like Carrie and I will continue to review and update our computer science audit. Some areas of focus for us, making sure that we're, that we're meeting all of our strands and standards. We're going to dig deep into the grades 11, 12 AP offerings. Again, if you saw the requirement, it says you have to offer high quality. It doesn't say that you have to offer all of the standards or that every student has to take the computer science class. You just have to offer a one-credit course. But we want to be ahead of the game and make sure we're doing everything possible. So it is our goal to implement all of the AP grade 11, 12 offerings into computer science, into the AP Computer Science Principles, dual-credit course. Have to work with Mr. Mills on that, who currently teaches that, that class, and just kind of see where we're currently at and what shifts maybe we could potentially make moving into the next school year. And then also with the theme of work-based learning opportunities across the state, we want to try and incorporate as many of those as we possibly can. So that's kind of her and I's work here, area of focus for the first semester. We'll also look to potentially develop a Nevada Community School District Computer Science Advisory Committee. It's not required, it's just a piece that was kind of recommended by the Iowa Department of Ed. So we'll look to implement that. And then, starting in July, we'll meet hopefully all of the requirements that are needed of us. I'd say right now, we're probably at 80% of where we need to be in July of 2023. Just have a few missing pieces in grades one through six that we just kind of need to look at and make sure that we're providing all of the standards to be able to hit that. And then Carrie and I will continue to work on our audit and then also update our district plan as needed. And of course, we'll bring that to you anytime we have any changes that are made. Okay. All right. So another piece of our plan is the development of teachers. So our current staff consists of Carrie Hillman, who is our tech integrationist. She will be working with our K through sixth grade classroom teachers on co-teaching and integrating within their current curriculum, which is something she already does. She's already going specifically in elementary grades K through four and providing some of the computer science standards and learning opportunities. We'll just have to enhance that this coming year in hopes then of being a full implementation for the following school year. Kaylee Hager, as I mentioned, will be our seventh-grade computer science instructor. Colton, Colton Shipman, who's a new hire, will be our middle school GTT instructor. And then James Mills, our high school instructor, who teaches the Computer Science Essentials, the cybersecurity, and then also the AP class as well. Some PD opportunities that have taken place. Carrie's been in a variety of different PD, she did computer science standards modules, training code.org, training computer science discoveries for the middle school, and then computer science principles for the high school. Kaylee Hager also participated in the computer science discovery with a focus in middle school. And then James Mills completes annual project Lead the Way training that he does every year. That's directly tied to the Computer Science Essentials and the cybersecurity. You might ask, how was that paid for? Carrie and Kaylee's were both done through grants through the AEA that the state was able to provide. And then James, we pay annually for those, for those trainings. And that's not a new thing, that's, that's happened every year that he's been with us. Another potential area is having a computer science emphasis within a teacher's individual career development plan. Their ICDP, so it could be another opportunity for them. Any future professional learning opportunities will be determined after completing all of our strand audit for this school year again in December of 2022. So then our teachers will be able to participate in the professional learning second semester of next year to then prep them for the 23, 24 school year. Our budget this year, we'll be spending $2,000 specific to professional development, and that's for James's project Lead the Way, professional development that happens. And then next year, looking anywhere from 2,000 to 10,000, could be a professional development, could be on computer science instructional supplies that are needed. Those are curriculum-related, so those will come directly from accounts that I manage. You might ask, do we have the space to be able to implement this? And the answer would be yes, due to, again, ESTER 2, ESTER 3, we've been able to just provide, or just have a little bit of flexibility within those accounts. We can also link the professional development through our TQ funds that we have annually. So this isn't going to really hurt us at all budget-wise. We have enough room, flexibility and management opportunities to make this easy. We'll also look for any grants that are available, that are being provided by the state or the AEA to use as well. The 23, 24 school year and beyond, because this is new, I wasn't really sure on what all, we'll have to look as far as annual expenses. That'll probably be dictated of how things go this coming school year. Our equitable access for all students, and this is essentially just taking our district-wide equity statement and just inserting computer science into the program, so there's nothing really that's changed into that. This is just ensuring that every single student in our district has the opportunity to participate in this program and also really trying to encourage our high school students to participate and take advantage of the course offerings that we'll have for them. So those kind of all tie into us. As we make our schedule, we want to make sure that we're not creating any holes or gaps or missing links within the schedule. So we're pigeonholing students to not be able to take the class. So that is an area of emphasis for Mr. Eins, Dr. Einswiler, Mr. Smith, as they develop the schedule to make sure that we are not making it so our students aren't able to take the class because of where the placement of those classes are. Our personnel that supports our computer science, so from the district level, Dr. Gray, myself, all of our building principals, our school counselors are also on this, just because of some scheduled development roles that they play. And then also communicating to students and encouraging students to partake, specifically at the high school, the computer science courses. Computer science teachers, who we went over before, Ms. Hillman, Mr. Shipman, Mrs. Hager, and then Mr. Mills. And then our committee, once that's established, we will add that group to our plan. With that is the conclusion of our computer science district plan.
So as we do this, the people that are doing this are also contract employees for Columbia School. Are they doing anything on this line?
Carrie, specifically. Yeah, so she's, yeah, their plan mirrors our plan. And the things that she is doing with our teachers, she's going to, just because of her load, right? We don't want to add more to that or pull away from, from what she's doing. She's going to have to collaborate a little bit more with the teachers over there, which they know, and that's in their plan. Their plan isn't public yet, because it hasn't been shared yet with their board. But as the developer of their plan, I can tell you it correlates ours and, yeah, yep. And works for both districts for what they need and not having to make any structural changes or management changes to anybody's plate.
So our Chromebooks support doing all this?
Yep, yep.
No new equipment, these purchased to do any of this?
Not, not as of right now. There could be some instructional supplies needed specifically probably to the middle school course, just because it's new. But as of now, she has everything she needs. And maybe after completing the professional development, there might be some, hey, can we look at this or that? And of course, we'll make that work for her.
Yeah, a few questions. First of all, has there been any discussion about making your science course requirement regulation? I don't know if we quite reach right now, but we, so we, so right now, the purpose of this is just to make sure that all districts offer.
Right.
A computer science course, but that doesn't mean that we reach all the students.
Right, yep.
How much of an ask would that be to offer a course that every student requires? How much of an ask would that be to offer a course that every student, or to acquire a course for the students throughout their, or at what point throughout their experience?
Right, right. Yeah, as far as the offerings go.
Yeah.
Yeah, so you wouldn't be able to take the AP computer science principles class until you took the computer science essentials.
So I'm guessing essentially what I've been saying is computer science essentials as a requirement.
Right.
So it's fairly clear.
Yeah, yep. It's doable.
Probably not with our current.
Right, we'd probably have to maybe look at increasing the offerings of that, and that could do some restructuring with, with James Mills's schedule.
I guess the bigger question is, does the district think that's a requirement?
You know, honestly, we haven't really dug too deep into it, just trying to get the plan up and running. Right, absolutely. Something, something for us to look at as, as an opportunity and maybe collaborate, Dr. Gray's opinion, Mr. Eins, Dr. Einswiler, Mr. Smith, and, and maybe also involving Mr. Baker also on the impact that could have on some different things for them. Yeah, one, I know one thing that is kind of the pushback at times when we look at adding graduation requirements is that it sometimes, it doesn't necessarily enhance like the opportunity within the classroom because we're forcing kids to take it. Full disclosure, I, I wanted teen leadership to be a graduation requirement when, when I first was principal. But then, yeah, there was some worry about how that class would go and might not be as beneficial to the students that are taking it and kind of hurting the environment maybe, if you will, if every student has to take it. So, yeah, it could be something, said we could look at.
The second question kind of shows age a little bit. Have, have we ever offered keyboarding? I don't think that exists as a class, right?
Yeah, I think a while ago it might have been, I, Mr., computer applications.
We used to have computer labs.
Yeah.
No, when you learn.
Like Homrow and ASDF. Yeah, they don't.
I, I was a football player. They had an overclass, over-scheduled class.
Yeah.
I laughed.
Yeah, I, I.
Thank you, Kevin, for that historical little note.
I know there isn't a keyboarding class, but it could be, it would make sense that it's integrated into some of the learning opportunities that take place, especially, especially being a one-to-one school or district.
Yeah, I don't think kids type in today in their screen, just like, how are you typing around?
Right. It's kind of like handwriting, too, you know? Cursive has been thrown out in some areas.
They all have Chromebooks now, right? So they should learn that.
So, um, the, the, there, you got it? It's been a long day.
Yes.
The computer science essentials, the in-person offerings, is there any opportunity or was there discussion on using Adventum offerings?
Yeah, so we do, like cybersecurity is offered within it. So if you were a student that was going fully online, there are opportunities through Adventum that meet the computer science, that meet the computer science expectations. However, just because, like, it's, they, it's not offered as a elective that a student can take that is not online, if that makes sense? So like if, if a student is, is normal in-person learner, it's not within like their catalog because we offer the same course in-house. If that makes sense?
It does.
But if you're fully online, there is the opportunity, there is a class that you could take, or we would probably encourage the student, if they want to take it, to come in and take it in person with Mr. Mills, just because of the nature of the class. But, yeah, and that requirement would be the cybersecurity. There's a cybersecurity online course that students can take.
I'm going to try asking another question. Maybe it'll be more successful. And Tom mentioned the, the Chromebooks. This is actually a little bit outside of his plan, but when kids first get their Chromebooks, do they spend a, like, amount of time learning? Like, you know, I spent time learning Microsoft Word. Now do they spend time learning Google Docs? Or they just, here, go learn it?
Right. Yeah, there is some initial learning that, that goes in, and I think it kind of enhances as students get older. I'm not sure how much probably goes in once they hit high school, just because of, you know, the years and years of having worked with it. But, yeah, there is an initial learning that takes place, and Kerry Hillman, Joe Wakeman, John Cruzey all do a great job of making sure that our students not only have the equipment, but also know what to do with it.
And they can train the training.
Right, right.
Not speaking from experience at all.
Thank you. That was a double-barreled information test.
Goodbye.
So I guess this brings us to our action agenda item, which is the twenty-twenty-one budget audit.
Yes, I've been working with our, with the school district auditors to get the, the annual financial, comprehensive financial report or the audit done for the twenty-twenty-one school year. This year, it seems to be, have been more difficult in that the auditing staff is no longer with their original firm. They're kind of in different firms, so they've been, they've been helping me out and we've been getting the, the audit report written. Dr. Gray sent you information this afternoon. It's pretty much final. We would like to have it approved so we can submit it to the, to the state auditor before June thirtieth. And I don't like having the audit report this late in, in the school year because basically any recommendations that they have made in the audit report will have to carry over to the next year. And next year, we have new auditors, so I just soon have the audit report back in, back in the wintertime sometime, but, but we would like approval of the audit report that, that Dr. Gray submitted via email this afternoon.
I guess I did not, for full disclosure, did not see, I think looked past this morning, so. Is there anything?
I, I encourage you to look at it, and then if you have any questions, contact me.
So your suggestion to me when soliciting a vote is to what then?
Well, the audit, the audit report as presented by, by me and Dr. Gray this afternoon via email.
There are no issues?
As far as issues, there were, there were a couple. One, we were required to move the Chris Burling's Resource Center program into a separate fund, and it's, it's a separate fund now, but it's, it's not making any money, so it's in a deficit position. That was one of the things that came up.
Is that going to be a problem?
I think, I think it's going to be a problem because the state recommended that we do it that way, and they in fact told me to do it that way, otherwise they would reject it on, on the annual report. So I can think I'm going to have an issue with the, with the Department of Ed on that. That's, that's the big one. There was a couple other smaller, smaller problems that really didn't amount to anything.
And they always, you've never had an audit, it doesn't have something. Well, for everybody that did get a chance to look at it, I didn't.
I had to read like the first two pages, you know, all I managed.
Yeah, I would say, I would say that's probably what I got through as well. I mean, I saw it later on the day and skipped it.
How are we doing? This is the one, you and I have done this a lot, our cash handling. Are we doing better as far as kind of taking care? Well, in the years past, that has always been one of the things we get dinged on audits because we are a trusting group and cash from concessions, cash from dances, cashes just moves in a way that we've never had any issues, but that always comes up when we're audited.
Well, that always comes up as an internal control problem, and it didn't come up that way this year.
Okay, going good?
I think, haven't we decreased the number of exchange of cash opportunities, whether it was pre-buying, pre, pre-sell of tickets or credit card only for some of the purchases?
Well, Mr. Smith, when COVID hit, he basically went to a cashless thing, and more and more people are using cash, some of them going back using cash, but there's a lot of, a cat, a lot of cashless opportunities out there.
Or exact change.
Or exact change.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, since, Leanne, are you on the board at Resource Center? It'd be interesting how this, uh, plays out because Chris watches the panties, and to have her in a deficit, not of her own creation and not of any programming missteps, I would like to think that we could find a way to, uh, I guess, she, she needs to be made clear that as it rolls up, it's going to have a negative because it's not a profit in, and so that, that is abundantly mitigated. Well, it is housekeeping, but it is a state requirement. It is here before us, and we have a deadline. So I think we've had a chance to look at it, discuss it. Brian's spoken to the issues at hand. The rest of it was fine, so. We have a motion in a second to approve the school year twenty-twenty-one school budget as was given to the board today. Anybody have any last questions or comments before we vote? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries the unanimous consent agenda. We about done with change orders? I don't know if you guys look at change orders, but that's where, world, I kind of come out of now. And it's an interesting comment that really was spoken to on the big one. We had asked them to put it in.
Page fifty-one.
Page fifty-one?
Yeah.
Yeah. And we'd asked for it, and it's just like, did you not see our mouths moving? The words? We're going to have to pay for it. It was, we were asking for it, and it was just going to be part of it, but it's just So on the dollars remaining, we burned through our contingency. Do we have additional dollars hanging out there at some point?
Well, the bond issue money came in, well, the bids came in low.
Right.
A year ago last December. And the bond issue money was higher than, higher than the bids, so I'm sure there's money remaining out there.
So that's where these dollars to fund these change orders are coming from?
Yes.
Bond proceeds?
Yes.
And we have additional bond proceeds?
Right.
So when this is all put to bed, you'll give us a final number on what remains?
Yes, yep.
Good to see we have a contingent food service director that could have gone empty for a
I move approval of the consent agenda?
Motion in a second.
Are you ready?
To adopt the consent agenda as provided tonight. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I had a conversation at the Historical Society's Music at the Mansion Saturday night with Marla Smarker, and she had asked me if there was anything going on at the school, and the only thing that I could think of was that we're doing this remodel here, and she was wondering if she couldn't be allowed to have a conversation with the school communicator, would be Joe Wakeman, and that she would like to come in and just maybe chronicle a little bit of it through, you know, photographs and just let people know, be something that she would be publishing or putting on her city. You know, just as this was formerly a city facility and just showing what the school district is doing it on transition basis this summer. So I'll be talking to Dr. Gray about it, and I don't know if anybody has any concerns there.
It'd be good to highlight that.
Say what?
It's not going to, it'd be good to highlight that. A couple people know what we're doing.
A lot of people have, haven't been in here for some time, so.
Right.
Why do we have those TVs on the wall? Then we have that one, why do we have those?
Actually, they're breakout areas.
Now we know. Ask him.
I said, I assume.
Oh, okay.
I would check. See what Dr. Gray or with Mr. Wakeman, what the plan is. But that'd be my, that'd be my guess for breakouts or small group, meaning it's just in case they want to use a, a different TV. Or if we're, or if there's a large group in here and sitting here instead of looking there, it might be easier to look right here. I know that's been the case a couple times with some different presentations that occurred with this one.
Anybody else? Calendar, we got one meeting next month, then we go back to work.
At this point, I'm not sure about that date. I have some upcoming work, travel. I have to schedule around it. I'm not sure that might be landing on that date, but I'll have to let everyone know.
You get a compliment on both the softball and the baseball program Saturday night, which in years past has not been the case. So we're making progress. Okay, you got a month. Enjoy your summer. That said.
Move to adjourn?
Is that good?
So move, all in favor?
Aye.
Night, everybody. Have a good summer. Thank you for the, the wingman thing there, Kevin. What else you got?